Good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the Transportation Committee. Today is Monday, July 10th. Our first item of business is to consider the minutes of the June 12th committee meeting. There are no corrections or additions. Consider our motion to approve those as written. A move approval of the June 12th. Second, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Next up, Mr. Alexander.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Colin Alexander. I serve as senior planner with the Birmingham Department of Transportation. And I wanted to provide you guys an update. Starting last year, we really began to take some serious initiatives in terms of rail crossing safety in this city. Counselor, your office partnered with Operation Lifesaver and did a lot of work around Rail Safety Week last October. I hope you're planning to do that again. We also began initiating, we partnered with Norfolk Southern. We installed Quick Curb delineators at four rail crossings. Sorry, at three rail crossings. We have four more that are planned in the future, which are designed to prevent vehicles from driving around gates when they come down. And we just got some really exciting news that I wanted to share in regard to those efforts. Last year for 2022, we had eight rail crossing incidences in which a train had a collision with a car, pedestrian, or bicycle in the city limits of Birmingham. Two of them were fatal. This year to date, we have had zero. Again, we're only about halfway through the year, so there could be some, but at this point, we are ahead of schedule from where we were last year, and a lot of that is due to the safety efforts that we have taken on and that we will continue doing. So I wanted to commend the committee and also just give ourselves a shout out for the work that we're doing.
Cool. So zero fatalities or?
Zero incidents.
And remind me where those crossings are?
The crossings that we've installed Quick Curb at include Brussels Avenue, 15th Place Southwest, and I believe 17th Street. The ones that we're planning are for Pearson Avenue, Jefferson Avenue, 31st Street, and for 17th Way.
Okay. And the two, I know the two on the west side in particular were the ones where it had the highest number of?
Yes, 15th in particular was the intersection where we had both of our fatalities last year.
So that's, and just to remind folks, so in order to do those, Norfolk Southern helped cover some of the costs of doing that, but it also included Section 130 funds from ALDOT. Is that correct?
The ones that we've installed just last year did, yes. That is correct.
Okay. And are we continuing to pursue those?
We are continuing to pursue Section 130 projects every time that we have a possibility. In fact, we've got a number of crossings that will have Section 130 funding. Not every crossing will get the Quick Curb delineators. 17th Way Southwest is one of those that is Section 130 that will. A lot of times, it's lighting and gate improvements and things like that, but yes, we are pursuing those as often as we're eligible.
And evaluation of crossings for that type of funding is?
It is entirely ALDOT-based. ALDOT has a database of their most dangerous crossings, and they are working through those methodically. So they contact us when we have a crossing that is eligible and there's funds available. We work together to determine what improvements need to happen at those crossings and move forward in partnership from there.
But it's based on the number of incidents?
Correct.
So higher number of incidents means higher priority, higher?
Correct.
... of funding? Okay. Is this over?
That is correct. That is correct.
It's interesting to learn some of the stuff about why that works. Apparently, people are afraid of their cars getting scratched. They're more likely not to go around them because they don't want their car getting scratched. Anyway. Cool. All right. Any other additional information on rail safety?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna skip over the next one on our agenda. She has been asking, obviously, update on traffic calming. Is that you also calling?
Yes, I will speak to that. So here, I can tell you the update in terms of what we have done since May. Our crews have successfully installed speed cushions on Five Mile Road, which was a big project for our crews to install. So that project has been completed. We are still working as methodically as we can through our traffic calming list. I will say this, there's a couple of staffings, just to background information for you guys to understand. The first is, you know, we have limited capacity in terms of what our roadway crews can do. They typically can install one of these roads a month on average. During the summer months, we have a big priority to catch up on striping at the moment, so a lot of our capacity is going to striping, and we're taking on the traffic calming projects as we can. The other part of this is that our traffic calming team, the design team, is going through some transition staffing-wise. We hope to have those addressed by the end of this month, but that has led to some delays in terms of work orders going out and things like that. So hopefully, in the next month or so, we'll be able to smooth those out. And then as we get into the cooler months and we start to focus away from striping, we'll hopefully pick up some of those traffic calming projects.
I'll add, that was a really great explanation, Colin. And the only thing I'll add to that is, we have built up a backlog of work orders that's up to the amount of capacity that we have to install them. So even though we have two team members in City Hall that kind of take the calls and coordinate with the residents and do that kind of front-end planning and coordination, those two are transitioning out, and then we have two new staff transitioning in. So even though that'll kind of slow down a little bit over the next month, month and a half while they're transitioning out, and employees transitioning in, we still have already processed enough requests and have approved enough requests that it's just up to the capacity of our field team to be able to install them. We just completed, as Colin mentioned, Five Mile Road, but we're gonna be probably moving a little slower on installations through the summer while we focus more heavily on striping. But as we get into the fall and certainly the winter months, we'll be installing a little more quickly. So we're moving about as fast as we can move, I think.
Correct.
Sure. Okay. Talk to me about maintenance of existing traffic calming equipment.
I can speak to that. So some of the first speed humps that we've installed, which are the same as a speed cushion in terms of their mechanics, they bolt to the ground. Speed hump goes all the way across the road. We installed a couple of those on Wynwood, for example, early on, and also early on, we installed a few on Carlisle. So of those, we've had to go back maybe three or four times to fix one piece of the segment that gets pulled up, like a truck runs over it and maybe pulls it loose. That's not so bad because it just takes them, you know, an hour or so to go fix it. So I've actually been a little bit impressed by the durability so far of those devices. That's different than the speed bumps we have downtown, which are not made for that application, but we're trying to force their usage there to solve a problem with donuts and exhibition driving. So I would not include that in your assessment of traffic calm devices, but the speed humps and speed cushions that we've installed, for the most part, have been pretty durable. We've had a few minor problems, but they haven't been too bad.
And I will say, that's consistent with pure cities. Memphis switched over from asphalt speed bumps to the speed cushions we've been using, partially because of the durability.
We've heard from cities that use asphalt, the asphalt becomes a maintenance headache faster. It's just heat and wear and tear. They just get the nasty, so if you have something that's difficult.
So for the applications where we're using a solution that wasn't designed for that application, how are we kind of?
The ones downtown?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you know, because those are, I assume they're requiring more staff time to address from a maintenance perspective?
Yeah, so a speed bump is, you know, like what we see downtown on Third Avenue, for example, and someone First Avenue. Those are more designed for low-speed parking lot applications and not taking the volume of traffic, so just the repeated thump, thump, and from, you know, heavy vehicles that we see downtown, particularly on First Avenue North. So they take beating. The ones that are in line with the main roadway, those tend to stay in place pretty durably. The ones that cross the main line, those get beaten up pretty quickly. We're about to try a different attachment method to see if that holds up a little bit better. And so, you know, I'll spare the details of that, but we're gonna try a different attachment method to see if that works. If that doesn't work, then I think we have to step back and reevaluate how we're using them. It may be that we still use them in line along the roadway, just because that seems pulled up, and I think that maybe accomplishes a deterrent for people doing donuts in the intersections. But my hope is that they'll, this new attachment method will work better. But if it doesn't, like, well, it's a setback and a reassess.
Okay. Tell me about Ninth Avenue North and 23rd Street and some of the new traffic calming devices that were installed adjacent to City Walk.
Yeah, so that street is actually not owned by the city. So that street is a part of ALDOT's right-of-way, and so they have been working with the Civic Center to manage that space. So that's why, let's see, a section of it gets closed off pretty regularly for events. That's done and managed by Civic Center in coordination with ALDOT. They, the Civic Center, installed those speed bumps. And they appear to be holding up pretty well, because I think Ninth Avenue is a lower-speed, lower-volume street rather than some of the ones where we're using them. But that's how those have been installed, is kind of by Civic Center in coordination with ALDOT.
Pretty aggressive there, yeah. Can't go sliding over there anymore. Almost can't do a drive.
Yeah, so on the speed cushions, I guess, one, to Colin, your point, what is it that would help, I guess? Get some movement, do more, and one road a month or something? What's the next step?
I would say it'd be a good conversation with the mayor's office in terms of just resource allocation. They, he and they will have to balance that as a priority, you know, against other priorities. So at some point, it's just a limitation of the resources that we have, so it's a conversation with the mayor's office.
This team, what all does this team, the team that installs them, what all do they do?
It's a great question. They're responsible for striping and signage, and then also barricades. Historically, meaning prior to five years ago, they only did striping and signage. In the last five years, we've also built up an inventory of barricades, which has been really good because we have a lot of safety things that come up. And then they've also supported with events as well. But they go out and place barricades. We've developed a 24-hour on-call system. They used to have that, and so we've got a number now that if some hazard pops up in the middle of the night, somebody can go out and put up a barricade. Before, you know, police officers were having, just pull things out of their trunk, you know, they may or may not have some cones or tape or whatever. So they handle barricades as well. But then we've added this traffic calming component, and so they'll install speed cushions and speed humps as well. So that's why they're limited in terms of their capacity to do that, because I think we've pulled as much as we can afford to pull from some of their other duties, particularly striping.
So a couple more. So when you say visit a long once, pace will pick up, what is the new visit?
Yeah, maybe two a month, yeah.
And then what can we do to make this better communicating as far as the schedule or the order of what gets next?
I think that largely comes out of our City Hall staff. So the two staff members, Eliza Vega and Amy Zari, you may have heard their names, they're transitioning out, and then we have two new staff members that are joining us. One of them has a set start date, the other, we're finalizing the start date. So once they get in place, I think they would be the best voice for answering those questions. A lot of it's very case-specific because there's, you know, steps in the process, and so different streets might be at different points in the process, or just some streets are more complicated than others. So I think they would, it seems like we got to a pretty good place where they were able to kind of answer questions if people would call and say, what's the status update? And the status update might have been, unfortunately, we're still a year out from being able to install yours, but they could at least answer the question.
Where do we stand as far as like the, I guess you would call it? How many do we have planned? That's what it's just in the workouts.
I don't know the exact answer to that, but yeah, yeah. But we did get a shipment in that would allow us, I think, to do five streets, about five streets. And, you know, if you imagine, say, four location per street, so maybe that's 20 locations, and each location might be two or three speed cushions, so.
So new budget, you're gonna, I guess, approach the same way, order another bulk cushion?
So I think we'll have to do an assessment of, I think we'll order enough speed cushion devices to, that we have the staffing capacity to be able to install, because there's a large increase in the amount of budget, I think. So we can spend that budget pretty quickly and catch up with our capacity to install them. But there are other kinds of things, too, that are also traffic calming, that that budget could be used for, that are kind of expensive, such as things like blinking signs in certain locations, also radar trailers and signs and things like that. So there's other things that we could spend some of that money on, but I think it will pretty quickly outstrip our ability to actually install it and reduce a lot of time.
I guess my thing is just making sure we stay, that we have more inventory, and we never to a point where we're waiting and stuff. The other thing that hurt us earlier this year, we couldn't install them because we didn't have them, and we could have been.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I mean, we had some supplier issues. Have that been addressed?
That was the biggest issue, and it has, to my understanding, this last order was successful and has been addressed. We've changed the style that we're ordering so that there's no more directional arrows. That way, we don't have some of the arrow mix-ups that we had before. So yes, that's part of our game plan, is to make sure that we're keeping more of those on hand, which we didn't use to keep those on hand when we first started this program.
Yeah, they, there's a couple of companies that provide them. We use one of the main companies, that's who we have on approved bid list, Traffic Logics. So they're subs of one of our vendors, but we've switched away from a site-specific design, as Colin mentioned, that has arrows, and so it's easy to then get mixed up or behind, and that's what happened with our vendor. They would send us the wrong kind of arrows. So we've switched to just one generic style that can be installed anywhere. They have just these very yellow general arrows on them, and so we can kind of match those components pretty regularly. And so to your point, we would like to keep an inventory of those, so that we don't get into that.
All right, we also still, my thing is actually, keep that inventory on hand so we never get caught up or run out, and we're sitting because we don't have anything. And then lastly, do you have an estimate on what that would cost if that was done via third party?
I don't, but I could work through administration to get you, you know, probably estimate.
By third party, you mean like third-party installation of traffic calming devices?
Yeah. Is it harder people to sell?
Yeah, I don't necessarily think that's a bad idea as we're getting better at kind of understanding the devices. We've, the slower pace has been helpful from the standpoint that we've been learning a lot as we've been going, learning about durability of devices, you know, appropriate placement and spacing, those kinds of things. So it's been helpful, but now that we have learned quite a bit and we've built up some technical knowledge, I think maybe there is room for that to increase our capacity. There's a lot of streets in Birmingham, we've got a lot of long straightaway streets that probably do need that treatment.
We'll put them up every street.
What's our capacity in terms of, you know, so there's a lot of design, you know, that has to be done, and that requires time, too, so?
That's those two staff members that I mentioned, so Eliza Vega, Amy Zari, you know, as they're transitioning out, but we're kind of caught up on that, as in, even if we produce a lot of those, our bottleneck is the staff ability to install them. But we've got two additional staff members transitioning in as they're transitioning out, so I think we'll get back on track with that pretty soon.
Okay.
The process itself has been smooth as far as getting, you know, making requests, whether it goes to neighborhood or straight through DOT, but just that initial process of working towards approval has been smooth, was, you know, someone gets approved, they're getting approved, and then they're going to get this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think we're up to like over 160, maybe?
We're close to 200. We're close to 200, and, you know, it may feel like an abyss, they're not forgotten. We've got them, we've got them planned out, it's just a matter of having the staffing capacity.
You mean the to-do list?
Right, right.
There's 200 on the to-do list.
They're all.
You're talking about requests?
We have, we have, yes, requests, not the to-do list, but in terms of number of streets that have requested for us to investigate. I think we are up to, if I remember right, we're up to 10 or 12 streets ready to start the installation process, when we have the capacity.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
Do you guys have any, repeat it, I feel Councilor Wood, because we tend to get hit a lot, you know, I just got a call when I said that a little while, I don't know if we've talked about that before. Like, what is the process for the community to understand? Because people tend to think that, hey, just tell DOT that we need speed bumps, and that's clear and not how they go. So do you have any literature or facts, you know, one page that we can easily give the community and say, this is what it takes to, you know, start a speed cushion?
So we do have, we do have a link on our department's website to traffic calming, which will break down our traffic calming policy, and through that can direct people to how the process is in terms of putting in a request, who you communicate with, and how, you know, how we go through that whole process. I know there have been requests about one-pagers from councilors about traffic calming. That's been something that we've been wanting to get to, but in this transition period in City Hall staffing, we just haven't had, we haven't had a dedicated person to put that together. So I think as we transition into new staffing, now that we are kind of to a point where, as Director Fowler's saying, our bottleneck is on installation, I think that gives us some time to start putting together that kind of a one-pager.
Yeah, because everybody's gonna get on their head, and I think that's when we kind of get lost in the shuffle, that, you know, everybody has access to computers and they really don't.
Sure. It's totally understandable.
Even if you do, you know, good luck finding something on the city's website.
And so I think, in all fairness, that we, you got an obligation to educate the community when it comes to things that they want to get done or what they want to see. I would like to know, because I don't like to be out, like, guessing that this, I think this is A, B, C, and how we get there, so it's an educational moment for me as well.
Yeah, I think that's completely fair. I think, you know, over the last two years, we've mostly been putting out the fires at the start of this traffic calming program, and I think now that we're getting into a rhythm, and once we settle in with this, through this staffing transition, I think we'll be able to be at a point where we can start focusing on getting that kind of.
So is it a way that, you know, I'm just trying to think, like, how can the councilors be of assistance? We have a whole PIO team, that we can say, like, I had Kim to do me something, like, do you know the role of the public safety chief? Like, can you give the basic information to us and let us disseminate to our PIO team, let them create the one pager?
I think we can, let us talk about that internally with our staff first, and we can coordinate our PIO team and the mayor's office with the council PIO team and kind of work on how to publicize that information once we put it together.
Yeah, I think we, that's a great request. We can definitely get some.
We should have been sure of these, that means when people are stolen at you, and people say that, and I'm the type of person, is if I don't know information, I don't, I don't talk about it. Not just say, hey, we sent a request to the mayor, but I like to be very informational so I can stand and, you know, say, this is how this goes. So I would definitely like to, you know, see, you know, you guys step that effort up. And also, what's the update on Wilkerson, right in that little area? I know we talked about, hey, you guys were doing some, something around tow again, that Wilkerson schools off.
So in terms of, this is another part of, again, that kind of goes to, as our, that same crew has capacity, we are beginning to slowly install school speed zone signage. This is gonna be a process, we have so many schools that we're gonna have to install these at, so we're taking them batch by batch. We have done one, our first round of designs, we did in May, and we've put out work orders for our crews to go install. Wilkerson was one of the first schools to be installed with that. So I would have to check back on an update in terms of where they are capacity-wise, but Wilkerson's in that first tier. We're getting to a point now where we can, we feel we can start designing the second group, and we're just gonna sort of tackle them step by step, methodically, starting first with schools that are on our traffic calming list.
Or is there a, we've talked about this before, is there a state sort of deadline, you know?
There's no, there's no deadline. It's an unfunded mandate by the legislature, so there's no, we're required to do it, but there's no compliance deadline, at least not in the state legislature language that was passed.
So what sort of liability do we have, you know, I mean?
I can't, I can't speak to the liability exactly. I mean, I guess, perhaps that's case by case, but when similar things have come up where there's an unfunded mandate, what seems to be the expectation on municipality is that we come up with a plan and we move through that plan as funding becomes available. Right. So we're developing a plan, and we'll try to step through that.
Exactly.
As resources.
So you're, as long as you're demonstrating intent?
Correct.
Yeah. Got it?
Yeah, I have one more question, Colin, and you could just provide, we have an update, Grand Boulevard, you know, D W of Clemens.
Yeah, D W of Clemens. I know that all those are on the traffic calming list, but I'm not sure where they are on the list, and that's gonna have to probably coordinate with our new staffing coming in.
Okay, once you find out, just, you know, send it up to Ms. Arco, they, they need us. Thank you.
And we can still answer questions about, you know, where does this, you know, such and such location fall on the list, between Colin and myself, and Amy's here at the end of the line. So we can still pull that information, so just we send those to.
Thank you.
Any additional questions about traffic calming?
Done enough to you.
Okay. All right. So next up, we wanted to get an update from the Office of the City Attorney about our prior discussions about amendments to our parking, private lot parking and towing ordinances. about our prior discussions about amendments to our parking and private lot parking and towing ordinances.
Hey, Julie Bernard with Office of the City Attorney, and this project has been, you know, collaboration with BDOT. And we have met, we've discussed, yeah, some of what came out of the town hall meeting and making those final adjustments. We don't have it in final form to move it like next week, but we should have it by the next transportation committee because we still have some little tweaks and then have to clean things up and make sure everything kind of meshes together. We've had, wanted to be sure to have Ms. Argo update you about the signage, which is a big part of this. And she had a little glitch with getting to her software that she needed to do some of the sign design, and we've got to get the words incorporated, how we're going to, you know, put it into the ordinance. But she brought to show you some ideas about how the signage might be changed, and I'll let her speak to that. But we've got just a little more polishing to do before it's ready to go, you know, in final form to the city council. But we can come back at the next meeting with that final product ready to move.
And speaking specifically to the signs, so this is, here's our school follower. Number one, we're trying to modernize the signage a good bit to, to make it stand out from, from all the other signs that are out there. And, and then number two, have one sign that has all of the information on it. So as opposed to having multiple signs, multiple locations, there's one sign that has everything you need to know about parking in that parking lot. And the sign will be posted at the entrance to the parking lot and then somewhere, you know, in the middle or wherever a pay station is or, or lighting is, so it's well lit. So, so that is how we're cleaning things up and making it more accessible.
So this is uniform signage for operators of private paid parking lots?
That they will have to install.
Okay.
And, yeah, if you're using towing or booting on other lots, it will, there will also have to be signage warning people of that fact, even if it's not a paid lot.
So this is kind of the general look and feel, and we'll go back in and ask specific language that is outlandish. So about numbers to call and, you know, this is the company and whatever, all the permanent information that we need to.
Okay, question?
Yeah, what is? I guess I'm just trying to see, so, you know, create this ordinance. What is their grace period or what does it look like for them to actually, you know, are they, do we have certain vendors where they can buy this from, or lead a loop on, on this process?
I think we talked about a sixty-day time period to get people up to code. So we would, I guess, we would adopt the revised ordinance, we would send out notification, and then from receiving notification, you have the sixty days to comply. These signs are standard sizes, standard colors, you can have them printed at any sign shop. So it's not something very, you know, fancy and difficult. And a lot of the signs are out there anyway, maybe, just because they're faded and worn and, yeah.
I guess talk a little about what happened, so you have a private lot owner after sixty-day window. They don't have, have the signage installed, they're towing people. What's the other side of that?
It's going to have to be, you know, steps taken for enforcement on that, which, you know, could be citation, you know, well, not necessarily citations, but notice that they're in violation and then going to municipal court for that process. It could be potential revocation action, but, you know, it just kind of depends on circumstances. But we've got to have that planned out on the enforcement side. And the way we're doing it at this point, you know, we've actually got two ordinances going, one which will regulate paid parking lots and will put back in some things that used to be in the city code that have not been enforced for a long time, about kind of making sure that the parking lots have adequate lighting and that the sign, yeah, the spaces are striped and marked, which they're supposed to be under the zoning ordinance, but this gives another, another avenue to get at it where, you know, when people are parking, that they know where they're parking, if there's something that they need to put into an app or a kiosk or anything about which space they're parked in, that space needs to be clearly identified, you know, with a marking. And some of those type of provisions that will go into, and of course a pay, you know, some of the lots, we've got to merge the signage because they need to say when the parking rules are in place. You know, there may be times that they're not. We did hear an example that was given by several speakers at the town hall meeting the other night that, you know, that there's a sign that says no overnight parking, but they've chosen 2:00 AM is the time at which they start towing people, but that sign doesn't reference it. So we've got to make sure that signs for, you know, parking lot signs, towing signs, that all of that works together and so that people know, you know, if they park, the way the ordinance reads not right now. Signs are supposed to tell people what are the conditions of parking. And, you know, if you arbitrarily pick a number and that's not posted, that's a concern. So we've got to make sure that we communicate that message clearly.
And related to enforcement, it's, it's kind of dividing and conquering.
That's what, yeah, that's kind of where I was going, I went, I deviated on another trail. But, um, that to have BDOT be the enforcement arm for the parking lots and the signage and, you know, working with planning, engineering, and permits, the, the, the site, that the, you know, the condition and the site of the, of the lots are done properly. And then BPD staying with the regulation of the actual towing activities. So kind of right now, we've got one, one police officer who primarily knows the most about the ordinance, and there's another, you know, officer in his unit. But to have BDOT be able to take over the part about making sure the signage and all of that part is taken, so that's kind of the divide and conquer, is to have two eyes looking at it. So if the police get called out and they see signs aren't up or something like that, then obviously they can deal with it. But the day-to-day, make sure everything's in compliance, we'll go to, on that end, we'll go to BDOT.
So the plan is to give the private owners sixty days to get these new signs put up? Because that's going to be my question, when Council of Woodstock, kind of alluded to that, like, once you give this notice to the private lots, who's going to go back out there and check to see is everything in compliance? Because what I'm hearing is you leaving that to the police today.
No, that piece is going, no, that piece, that piece about the parking lots is going to BDOT.
Okay, so about the sixty days, we'll go and inspect.
Okay, that's what I'm. And then who's going to inspect it?
And it's more than just signage that they're going to have to comply with. If their uniforms for their employees are not updated, if their trucks are not well identified, you know, if they don't have the badges and all the other thing that they're supposed to have, that's, that's the other thing that's in compliance.
Yeah, that's the end that's going to stay with the police department.
Right, okay. So sixty days, day sixty-one, I'm just hoping that you're saying is that BDOT is going to be out here keeping the private lots and see if these done.
It's not B D, but it might also be B D.
It is an issue, you know, with this, this, this.
There is.
Kind of territorial.
So it's going to be a big lift for the first few weeks to get everybody on board, but then, you know, requesting the reset button.
So I guess what does BDOT's feel on like crowdsourcing this and saying, if you know about a sign in a parking lot that does not have any.
I think people will let us know without soliciting.
Call.
Design competition.
We could go through three-one-one, create a category to that.
Could.
We'd be able to do it in a week versus.
Well, I mean, my concern with that is, I assume that your priority initially would be the paid lots. But this is going to cover private unpaid lots too.
Like restaurant owners and?
Yeah, and, and that, you know, makes it a much bigger sort of responsibility, so.
Now, most of our concerns, they come from the private unpaid lots?
Yes. Yes, but, you know, there'll, there'll be, from a private property owner's, you know, perspective, you know, I can, you know, see some issues, but.
I think from what I understand, I still haven't exactly identified the lot that was talked about, about the overnight 2:00 AM thing, but my understanding is that may be like a restaurant parking lot and not a paid lot. So there, there is still, there are still concerns, this is going to be like everything. Not sure that we have a comprehensive list of all the paid lots, and obviously we're not going to have a complete list, I don't think, of all the private lots that might be towing. We're supposed to have lists from the towing companies about where they tow, but, you know, we're going to have to get that information from the police department. We're going to have to see if those have been kept updated. And like anything else, there are going to be things you don't know. And it's just going to have to come about by complaint or finding it in the field. There's, you know, there's the, the low-hanging fruit, and then there's the little bit harder to reach, but you, you know, you find it or, you know, you, you kind of know where to go to look for it. But then there are those that are just going to have to come about.
So the towing company is supposed to provide you guys a lot location where they tow people via the super.
They're supposed to be providing that information to the police.
So now we just sit here to see what I mean, all right?
Well, that's to the city.
Okay. So why are we not, okay, they're supposed to be doing it, why, why, you know, I'm just asking a question because I'm listening and I'm hearing, supposed to be doing this, and why aren't we making sure that they are doing this?
We haven't discussed that question with the police department, and there is a limitation. As I said, there's really one person who is, who is dealing with the most of this issue at this time and has multiple other issues that they also have to handle.
Yeah, I would add to that, I mean, certainly, you know, starting tomorrow, BDOT's not going to be, you know, overly resource to go tackle this issue very greatly. However, we probably have a little more flexibility than our partners in BPD, who are having to respond to much more intense issues than we are. So our resources probably have a little more flexibility to focus on this than their resources.
And also, don't we also permit these private paid lots, so?
Well, they should have a business license, the permit is the ordinance.
So I would think that as a part of that permitting process, that they, we would make them specify that if they're doing, what do you call it, involuntary towing?
Yeah, non-consensual, but yeah.
Non-consensual towing, that they have to specify where their impound lot is.
Yeah, who, who they're using, give us some details, you know, what's their criteria for towing somebody?
So in terms of a potential public hearing at a council meeting to consider the ordinances that are still in development, what are we thinking?
Probably early, mid-August, probably, because if we come back to committee in two weeks on the twenty-fourth, then we would need to set the hearing, you know, for the council, probably, you know, the next week. We would set what date that's going to be and then put out some notice ahead of time.
So our, our advertising requirement for those is seven days or?
Um, we usually do maybe a couple of weeks, but there is no statutory for, for this kind of hearing. There is no ordinance or specific, you know, ordinances can be adopted without hearings. But with something like this, we've usually recommended we do a hearing.
So potentially we advertise August one, give it two weeks, we could be at council August one.
Well, you'd take it to council, well, I guess we could, we could, we could have put it, if we come back on the twenty-fourth, we could put it on the twenty-fifth for the council to set the hearing and have it advertised in that time period.
So go over that with me again, so at council, what date?
The twenty-fifth to say we're going to hold a hearing and set the date of that hearing and have the council direct that there be that date published.
July twenty-fifth or?
July twenty-fifth.
We're going to announce it, and then on August, and then two weeks, August.
Well, no, it would be published that next week, it would be published sometime that next week. So either the eighth or the fifteenth, let me just look at that.
All right, any additional questions? We're at item four. I mentioned to the adjournment.
I got a hell of a, I got some new business.
Yeah.
This, I wanted to ask, well, we've got DOT about, I've got a honorary kind of street dedication for a portion of the street. Some right there, I'm trying to close a loop on, uh, what we need to get that out of.
I guess the existence reason. So a lot of these, I'm not sure which one, what's the street, what's the street or the person?
The person, Steve Sarah.
Is that him?
Steve Sarah.
Oh, is that him?
Centerport Parkway.
Okay, is he with, associated with Jeff State University, is that one? So a lot of these originate in funny ways, because even though when you read the code, at first it seems clear, but when you start working through it, I think it gets a little bit fuzzy and complicated pretty quickly. And so sometimes they start out and people think they're doing the right thing and, and then they get lost in an abyss. So I would like for our office to assist in maybe either revising the ordinance, I don't know that the ordinance needs to be revised, but creating a help sheet or something to go with it to help people start the process. In the last few months, we clarified that our department is probably the best to own the process. If you read the ordinance, it touches a lot of different departments, but our office is probably the best for managing that. At the moment, while we're going through all of those staff transitions, I'm managing those, and so that has created a bit of a bottleneck, but I'm going to just try to work through them one by one and get them processed as quickly as we can. So I'm trying to keep that as simple as possible. There are a few that, so a lot of times they get started and they spin around administratively into this before they get to our office or to our desk, before we see them. So there's a few that have kind of risen up to our office that way, so I'm trying to talk those out first. This may be one of those two.
Thirteenth quarter, I work this, and there's a really like short, shorter two boards.
Yeah, and, and none of them are usually technically complicated to implement. It's just, we just have a process that we've set up to go through. It's not a bad process, but it's just an administrative task. And so right now I'm working on those, on those, just to make sure it gets to me.
Yeah, I was going to.
Adjournment?
Standing.
Adjournment, if you'd say hi.